Good morning. Welcome to the First Order Council Meeting for Council for the year of 2025. It's the 28th of January and this is the Ordinary Council Meeting for City Council. We have quite a few people in our public gallery today, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to welcome you and thank you very much for being here. I also thought I'd take an opportunity to just refresh everyone on the council meeting procedure policy in regards to attendance of a public and media at a meeting, in regards to section 3.14 to 3.16. I just want to let people know that under these provisions of the council, which I will be enforcing today, a person who is not a member of the local government or committee must not interrupt or obstruct the proper conduct of a meeting. If a person other than a member of the local government or committee interrupts or obstructs the proper conduct of a meeting, the chairperson of the meeting may ask the person to leave the meeting place. And a person asked to leave a meeting place must immediately leave the place and must not return to the meeting until the end or at such earlier time as decided by the chairperson. And I just want to remind people that in the Queensland Parliament and the Australian Parliament, if you are in the public gallery there, you must remain silent, you're not even the whispering, and you can't take your mobile phones even in there as well. So I do ask that that same respect is accorded to the chambers here today. We are a chamber of democracy and we need these rules to be followed, so thank you very much for that. I think I was supposed to call that we did start the meeting at 10:01 and I now will do an acknowledgement, so I'll call attendance, and I'll say that everyone is in attendance except for Council Augustine and I understand that she has been delayed. She had a previous commitment and she's on her way in. I'll do a welcome to country, an acknowledgement of country. HTR City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Thank you. We're very fortunate today to have Pastor Billy Dean from the Raceview Congregational Church who will give the opening prayer. Pastor Billy, may I ask you to come forward? You've done this before, you know the drill. Morning Pastor Bill, I'll hand over to you. Feel free to introduce yourself and your church and what you do as well as the prayer. Thank you.
Thank you Mayor, thank you councillors for the, again, the privilege. I think this is the third year that we've had the various ministers from the Ipswich region come and open each council meeting in prayer. I'm from the Raceview Congregational Church and I think I've worked with just about everybody here in this room over community groups. I realised the other day, we're 156 years old this year. I've only been there for 11 of them. Sometimes it feels like I've been there for the whole 156, but as a church and this morning our kindergarten has started up, members of our church have started up the year as teachers and teacher ages in the community. Our soccer club is in the midst of signing on, on track for another 600 players in our club. Boys and Girls Brigade kick off this week, all our kids' programmes start back up and it's an exciting privilege to be part of the community. And I wake up every day thinking, how did I get here? But I'm so glad God chose me to be here. So I want to open up this morning's council meeting in prayer, if you'd like to bow your heads. Most gracious God, we pray for our Ipswich City Council, for our mayor and our councillors, for our council staff and their families. We ask that you direct and prosper the mayor and these councillors in all their decisions for this city. We ask for safety and welfare for our residents, we ask for prosperity for our businesses, that there is peace and happiness, truth and justice in all our affairs. We look for wisdom and strength for our community and our service groups as they serve the people of this city. May we all be united in serving each other through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Bill. I hope all the little kindies have a great day, first day of school. Next item is item four, apologies and leave of absence. There have none unless there's some from the floor. Item five, condolences, and we have a condolence motion from Councilor Paul Tully on former Ipswich Alderman Norman Henry Kruger. I'll hand over to you, Councilor Tully.
Thank you Mayor, I move that council convey condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of former Ipswich Alderman Norman Henry Kruger who passed away on the 10th of January 2025.
Seconded Mayor.
Thank you. Norman Henry Kruger was born on the 4th of October 1931 during the Great Depression and the family lived on a farm in the Pineshire north of Brisbane. He was the middle son of three boys. He remained a country boy at heart all of his life and enjoyed living in the rural atmosphere of Marburg in his later years moving there in 1996. In 1958 he was elected as a councillor on the Pineshire Council, renamed the Pine Rivers Shire Council in 1959, becoming the youngest shire councillor in Queensland. He was a councillor for two terms and stood for state parliament three times as the ALP candidate in the seat of Marumba, a seat later held by his younger brother Joe. He once told me that the only exciting thing ever to happen in his time on the Pine Rivers Council was when the shire hall burnt down to the ground, destroying all the records the night before the council auditors were planning a major audit of the council the following day. In 1970 Norm left Kalangren and came to Ipswich to join the local prison service where he worked for 24 years. In March 1979 he was elected as the Alderman for Division Four of the city of Ipswich, comprising at the time part of Bouval as well as the suburbs of North Bouval, East Ipswich and Basin Pocket. Norm saw it as an opportunity to do something positive for his community and try to make the city a better place to live. He was an Ipswich Alderman for 15 years and held many roles on council, including Chair of the Town Planning and Heritage Committee as well as serving on the Finance and Works Committees and as Deputy Mayor from 1993 until his retirement in 1994. As Deputy Mayor Alderman Kruger had the rare privilege of being appointed as council leader based on the English local government tradition of recognising his majority support on the council. Public speaking was Norm's forte. He was a brilliant orator, raconteur and excellent debater. He was always a quick-witted, eloquent and passionate speaker on behalf of his community and was highly regarded as an advocate for our city. On a lighter note, his passion for yodeling regularly produced a fairly mixed response from his colleagues, family and friends. Norm Kruger was awarded Life Membership of the Australian Labor Party in 2015. When he passed away earlier this month, he had been part of the Labor Party for 70 years. He was a prolific letter writer to the Queensland Times and it was not unusual for him to have up to two letters to the editor published every week, usually of a highly targeted political nature. At a personal level, Norm Kruger was a delight to work with for 15 years as a colleague and mentor. In 1990 he married Jan and was adopted by the Rule family. Jan was his supportive, caring and loving wife for 34 years. He idolised his only child, daughter Leanne, who had the educational opportunities which Norm had craved for from his younger days. Norman Henry Kruger passed away peacefully in Ipswich on the 10th of January 2025 at the age of 93. He is survived by his wife Jan and his daughter Leanne. Norman Henry Kruger, may you rest in peace.
Thank you Councilor Tully. Councilor Tully has a second to wish to speak to the condolence motion. Would anyone else like to speak? I think Councilor Madden.
Thanks Mayor. Yes, I was pleased to join Councilor Tully and former Councilor Denise Hanley at Norm's funeral at Worral Park Prematorium and it was a great send-off. I remember Norm sitting on his porch outside his house in Edmund Street, Marburg and I always gave him a toot as I went past and he always gave me a big wave. Occasionally I'd stop when I had a few hours to spare and to chat to Norm, but he was a great guy and full of stories and I think he gave a lot of thought to his funeral service because of the song that they played as the opening number, which was "It's hard to be humble when you're perfect in every way". So it was a great send-off and I'm sure there are other councillors there from other local government areas that I just didn't know, but we did our best to give them a great send-off. Thanks Mayor.
Thank you Councilor. Anyone else? I'll put the measure of the vote, those in favour please raise your hand, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you Councilor Tully. Item six, tributes and there are none. Item seven, presentations, petitions, there are none. We now move to item eight, which is presentations and deputations. I understand that Councilor Pi Augustine has a certificate appreciation from the Ipswich region Chamber of Commerce and Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce that you'd like to present to the CEO. I'll hand over to you.
Thank you Mayor. Yes, I do, I've got two certificates from, as you said, the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce. It's in recognition for our partnership with both chambers. I was presented one, the Ipswich one, previously prior to Christmas and the Springfield one just at the last event. Just attending the chambers, I can see the real partnerships that happen, especially with our businesses, there's a lot of cross collaboration between them and I think that just adds to the strengthening of our community. So very proud to present these two to your CEO for, yeah, so I'll give it.
If I can through you Chair, thank you very much to the council, thank you very much to Council Augustine.
Thank you very much. Thank you Councilor. Thank you CEO and to your teams. Item nine is public participation, there is none. Item 10, matters of public interest, there are none. Item 11, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda, are there any declarations on matters on the agenda today?
End or at such earlier time as decided by the chairperson. And I just want to remind people that in the Queensland Parliament and the Australian Parliament, if you are in the public gallery there, you must remain silent, you're not even the whispering, and you can't take your mobile phones even in there as well. So I do ask that that same respect is accorded to the chambers here today. We are a chamber of democracy and we need these rules to be followed. So thank you very much for that. I think I was supposed to call that we did start the meeting at ten oh one. And I now will do an acknowledgement, so I call attendance. And I'll say that everyone is in attendance except for Councilor Augustine. And I understand that she has been delayed. She had a previous commitment and she's on her way in. I'll do a welcome to country, an acknowledgement of country. Itra City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Thank you. We're very fortunate today to have Pastor Billy Dean from the Raceview Congregational Church, who will give the opening prayer. Pastor Billy, may I ask you to come forward? You've done this before, you know the drill. Morning Pastor Billy, I'll hand over to you. Feel free to introduce yourself and your church and what you do as well as the prayer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors, for the, again, the privilege. I think this is the third year that we've had the various ministers from the Ipswich region come and open each council meeting in prayer. I'm from the Raceview Congregational Church and I think I've worked with just about everybody here in this room over community groups. I realised the other day, we're a hundred and fifty-six years old this year. I've only been there for eleven of them. Sometimes it feels like I've been there for the whole hundred and fifty-six. But as a church, and this morning our kindergarten has started up, members of our church have started up the year as teachers and teacher ages in the community. Our soccer club is in the midst of signing on, on track for another six hundred players in our club. Boys and Girls Brigade kick off this week. All our kids' programmes start back up. And it's an exciting privilege to be part of the community. And I wake up every day thinking, how did I get here? But I'm so glad God chose me to be here. So I want to open up this morning's council meeting in prayer, if you'd like to bow your heads. Most gracious God, we pray for our Ipswich City Council, for our mayor and our councillors, for our council staff and their families. We ask that you direct and prosper the mayor and these councillors in all their decisions for this city. We ask for safety and welfare for our residents. We ask for prosperity for our businesses, that there is peace and happiness, truth and justice in all our affairs. We look for wisdom and strength for our community and our service groups as they serve the people of this city. May we all be united in serving each other through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, councillors.
I hope all the little kindies have a great day, first day of school. Next item is item four, apologies and leave of absence. I have none unless there's some from the floor. Item five, condolences. And we have a condolence motion from Councilor Paul Tully on former Ipswich Alderman Norman Henry Kruger. I'll hand over to you, Councilor Tully.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council convey condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of former Ipswich Alderman Norman Henry Kruger, who passed away on the 10th of January twenty twenty-five.
Seconded, Mayor.
Thank you. Norman Henry Kruger was born on the fourth of October nineteen thirty-one during the Great Depression and the family lived on a farm in the Pineshire, north of Brisbane. He was the middle son of three boys. He remained a country boy at heart all of his life and enjoyed living in the rural atmosphere of Marburg in his later years, moving there in nineteen ninety-six. In nineteen fifty-eight, he was elected as a councillor on the Pineshire Council, renamed the Pine Rivers Shire Council in nineteen fifty-nine, becoming the youngest shire councillor in Queensland. He was a councillor for two terms and stood for state parliament three times as the ALP candidate in the seat of Marumba, a seat later held by his younger brother Joe. He once told me that the only exciting thing ever to happen in his time on the Pine Rivers Council was when the Shire Hall burnt down to the ground, destroying all the records the night before the council auditors were planning a major audit of the council the following day. In nineteen seventy, Norm left Kalangren, came to Ipswich to join the local prison service, where he worked for twenty-four years. In March nineteen seventy-nine, he was elected as the Alderman for Division Four of the city of Ipswich, comprising at the time part of Bouval, as well as the suburbs of North Bouval, East Ipswich and Basin Pocket. Norm saw it as an opportunity to do something positive for his community and try to make the city a better place to live. He was an Ipswich Alderman for fifteen years and held many roles on council, including Chair of the Town Planning and Heritage Committee, as well as serving on the Finance and Works Committees, and as Deputy Mayor from nineteen ninety-three until his retirement in nineteen ninety-four. As Deputy Mayor, Alderman Kruger had the rare privilege of being appointed as council leader based on the English local government tradition of recognising his majority support on the council. Public speaking was Norm's forte. He was a brilliant orator, raconteur and excellent debater. He was always a quick-witted, eloquent and passionate speaker on behalf of his community and was highly regarded as an advocate for our city. On a lighter note, his passion for yodeling regularly produced a fairly mixed response from his colleagues, family and friends. Norm Kruger was awarded Life Membership of the Australian Labor Party in two thousand and fifteen. When he passed away earlier this month, he had been part of the Labor Party for seventy years. He was a prolific letter writer to the Queensland Times and it was not unusual for him to have up to two letters to the editor published every week, usually of a highly targeted political nature. At a personal level, Norm Kruger was a delight to work with for fifteen years as a colleague and mentor. In nineteen ninety, he married Jan and was adopted by the Rule family. Jan was his supportive, caring and loving wife for thirty-four years. He idolised his only child, daughter Leanne, who had the educational opportunities which Norm had craved for from his younger days. Norman Henry Kruger passed away peacefully in Ipswich on the 10th of January twenty twenty-five at the age of ninety-three. He is survived by his wife Jan and his daughter Leanne. Norman Henry Kruger, may you rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilor Tully. Councilor Tully, is there a second who wish to speak to the condolence motion? Would anyone else like to speak? I think Councilor Madden.
Thanks, Mayor. Yes, I was pleased to join Councilor Tully and former councillor Denise Hanley at Norm's funeral at Worrell Park Prematorium. And it was a great send-off. I remember Norm sitting on his porch outside his house in Edmund Street, Marburg, and I always gave him a toot as I went past and he always gave me a big wave. Occasionally I'd stop when I had a few hours to spare and to chat to Norm. But he was a great guy and full of stories. And I think he gave a lot of thought to his funeral service because of the song that they played as the opening number, which was, it's hard to be humble when you're perfect in every way. So it was a great send-off and I'm sure there are other councillors there from other local government areas that I just didn't know, but we did our best to give him a great send-off. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Anyone else? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you, Councilor Tully. Item six, tributes, and there are none. Item seven, presentations, petitions, there are none. We now move to item eight, which is presentations and deputations. I understand that councillor Pi Augustine has a certificate appreciation from the Ipswich Region Chamber of Commerce and Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce that you'd like to present to the CEO. I'll hand over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I've got two certificates from, as you said, the Ipswich Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Springfield Chamber of Commerce. It's in recognition for our partnership with both chambers. I was presented one, the Ipswich one, previously, prior to Christmas, and the Springfield one just at the last event. Just attending the chambers, I can see the real partnerships that happen, especially with our businesses. There's a lot of cross collaboration between them and I think that just adds to the strengthening of our community. So very proud to present these two to your CEO for, yeah, so I'll give it.
If I can, through you, Chair. Thank you very much to the council. Thank you very much, councillor Augustine.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Augustine, and thank you, CEO, and to your teams. Item nine is public participation, there is none. Item ten, matters of public interest, there are none. Item eleven, declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations on matters on the agenda today? None? Okay, if something does pop up, just please let me know. We now move on to item twelve, point one, which is the confirmation of the minutes. Does anyone have any questions or queries or amendments of those minutes? No, in that case, I will move that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 12th of December twenty twenty-four be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item thirteen is a merril minute, and there is none. Item fourteen, business outstanding, and there is none. Fifteen, reception and consideration of committee reports. Obviously, in January, we follow the tradition of having no committees and having it all at the ordinary council meeting today, so there are none. So I'll move back on to officer reports. And sixteen point one is the CEO organisational performance report for December twenty twenty-four. Do I have any questions of the CEO on that report? No, in that case, I will move that. Do I have a second for that report? Thank you, councillor Doyle. In speaking to this report, it was great to see Colleges Crossing Recreation Reserve reopen in December on time for the school holidays. And I was equally pleasing to see it pass its first flood test, when new natural and resilient design kept the bulk of the infrastructure out of harm's way during the heavy rain over the Christmas period. The redesign was shaped by community consultation with more than one hundred mature trees and nearly thirty-five thousand plants were added, along with significant landscaping and infrastructure improvements. Almost ten million dollars in project funding was by the state and the federal government. So it's been great to see so many families and residents enjoying the various activities there over the holiday period. Rosewood Library also reopened in time for the school holidays after it had the roof closed. It was closed because of roof repairs after sustaining damage in the twenty twenty Halloween hailstorm. And Ripley Valley is one of the largest urban growth areas in Australia, forecast to ultimately be home to a quarter of Ipswich's population. So it's pleasing to see that we have reached a significant milestone on the Ripley Road duplication, with the design work starting this month. Are there any other discussions or points that people would like to raise? councillor Antonelli.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just like to, just in light of your comments in relation to the Rosewood Library, I just expressed to all those in attendance and listening, if you haven't had the chance to visit the Rosewood Library, it's a stunning, stunning building. It was my first chance to see it after it was constructed just recently, having met a member of the community in there. And I've got to say, a great legacy to the former councillor David Palkey, who pursued that without any hesitation. And the incredible forbearance he had to try and deliver that piece of infrastructure to the Rosewood community, it's a great legacy to him. So I just thought I'd raise that. Thank you, Mayor.
And councillor, I think, thank you to councillor Madden, who was the former State MP, who secured many millions of dollars for that, so thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Madden.
Yep, I'm sorry to have to raise a slightly negative added issue, Mayor, but it's to do with the Colleges Crossing opening. And it disappoints me, I mean, SEQ Order, important members of our community, controlling the Brisbane River and water infrastructure. But it disappoints me that when they release water from Wyvenhoe Dam, they can't organise the release, that it doesn't cause the overflow of Colleges Crossing Bridge. And twice we had water over Colleges Crossing. It was fine weather, there wasn't an expectation of an imminent flood, and I just wish, and I'm going to try and communicate with SEQ Order about this, that when they do releases, instead of opening up all the gates, and maybe just open up one gate, and instead of water coming down the river for three days, one day it comes down the river for three days, it causes an incredible inconvenience to people on both sides of the river, even though we do have a new bridge built by SEQ Order, the Pioneer Bridge at Mount Crosby. But I just wish they could just lower the outflow when they do have to release water from Wyvenhoe Dam, that it doesn't overtop Colleges Crossing Bridge, Mayor.
Have you contacted SEQ Order about that yet?
Yes, yes.
And what's their response?
I'm still talking to them.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's not only me that has raised this issue, of course, because of the flooding and the effect on Colleges Crossing Recreation Area, it had to be inspected and to make sure that it was, and there had to be a lot of clean-up in that area before it could be reopened after those flooding events, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Augustine?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Mayor, I just want to highlight, especially, and I think councillor Madden would probably think the same, South Ripley is a great developing area and we look at the trees getting knocked down. And I think, you know, for us acquiring thirty-two hectares in South Ripley, which is, you know, a significant ecological corridor, I think is a great step for us as a council. So, yeah, I think, kudos to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to sixteen point two, the monthly financial performance report for November twenty twenty-four and December twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions of the relevant council officer on these reports? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second for it? Thank you, councillor Martin. Any discussion on the report? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's carried. We now go to item sixteen point three, which is the procurement, recollect picture library subscription. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this? So is that a hand raised, councillor Augustine?
Sorry, I was trying to do this and go, you have a question of a council officer? Yes, please.
Is it regards to the software itself or the procurement?
The performance.
The actual software performance?
Yes.
Yes. Ask the CEO, who the relevant council officer would be.
Perhaps ask the question and we'll see, might need to take it on notice. It'll be from Community Cultural and Economic Development, that would be the relevant officer. What's your question, councillor?
I just wanted to know, before we extend and commit funds to it, how has this website performed? You know, like what stats have we got? Who's, how many visitors have we got to the site? And what interest from our community have we got? You know, and what uploads have we got of pictures? Do we have any stats? Because there's nothing in the report that says how the actual website's been performing.
Thank you, councillor, through you, Mayor. Yeah, there is only broad commentary in the report, I think, in terms of its use. Can I take that on notice? And we'll see if we can get some of those figures before the meeting concludes.
Sure, thank you.
I'll need to take that on notice, if you'd like that information before considering the matter further.
I guess the software is for picture, so I'll wait till it's moved and seconded. We can have a discussion on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may ask another? Any other questions? Yes, I think councillor Tully was asking one next.
Yeah, my question relates just to the firm and the recommendation that there's only one supplier. Just wanted some information from the relevant officer in relation to other councils in Australia, which are using this system, but what alternatives there are. And also just some terminology in paragraph B, just to improve the wording of the recommendation, but not the thrust of it.
I think, again, Mayor, we've got our manager of library and customer services, who's watching the meeting online, and she's getting that information together ASAP, so.
I think councillor Antonelli, but it might be that we may ask for this to be considered last or something like that at the end of this, if we're waiting for some questions?
I'm happy to add my question to it, if that helps.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Antonelli. Tell us what your question is.
Yeah, mine's similar in many respects to councillor Tully in that recommendation A says that it stipulates that it is really only one supplier. So I guess in B, we're sort of held by whatever price they charge. So I guess my question relates to whether or not that price, when we don't have a comparison, is considered fair and reasonable.
Thank you. Based on the fact, CEO, will we be able to get those questions today, do you think? I just note that it's got a 12th of February twenty twenty-five expiry.
Hmm, I believe so. The manager is working on it right away. So I'll advise you if otherwise, Mayor, otherwise if it could be moved to later in the agenda, I hope that we'll have the information for the council.
If everyone's okay, will I have it go after sixteen point six? So, Mayor?
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Tully.
Sorry. Can I just expand on my question? It's not a great expansion, but just to clarify that, what are the other alternatives? How do they compare with this particular one from Recollect Limited? The next question, I just might raise it now in terminology, and I didn't go into the detail. Paragraph B, if you look at the recommendation in the third line, it talks, it says, enter into a contractual arrangement at the start, and then it goes, being an initial term of three years with no option for extension. I think the words, an initial term, should be deleted, because if, an initial term suggests that there'd be something going beyond that. So when it comes for the, so the person online, I'm just saying, it's not particularly a matter for them to address.
No, no. I guess just to give the relevant officer a bit more time, I move that we actually move this particular matter, which is item sixteen point three, to after seventeen point one. So we will move it there. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion on that? Yes, councillor Dronick?
Just a grammatical error in the title, the misspelling of subscription minor, but just something to correct.
So where was that?
The title, including subscription, is missing an R.
Ah, yes. Thank you.
Just clarification, Mayor. You said before, after sixteen point six, you're now saying, you're now saying after seventeen point one?
Because of the extra information. So after seventeen point one, it was seconded by councillor Madden. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. I'll let you, let me monitor that, councillor. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Chair.
We're now move on to item sixteen point four, which is the proposed, pardon me, the proposed acquisition for land on Fisher Road upgrade. And there are recommendations to acquire land as per confidential attachment. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? Yes?
Mayor, we might, because it is, yeah, some confidential material that's been presented to councillors, we might need to move into a closed session for that.
Okay. Are you going, are you moving to go into closer?
I'll move that, I move that in accordance with section two five four J three, in relation, two five, sorry, two five four J three.
It's probably G? Negotiations of a commercial matter?
Yeah, negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government, for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. And that's of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve, the meeting move into closed session to discuss the matter.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Dronick. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Just even the public gallery, the land that's being discussed is confidential, because obviously it's a commercial dealing that council has. So we will go into closed session to discuss this particular topic. If I just ask you to wait outside there and then as soon as this matter's finished, we'll call you back in. So we won't go on to any other matters till you're back in. Thank you. So we won't go on to any other matters till you're back in. Thank you. Can you let me know when we're back live? Thank you. Thank you for those who are online. We're just waiting for the public gallery to come back, and we have quite a lot of media, so I'll let them get set up. Thank you. We're back in open session, and the item is 16.4, and there were commercial sensitivities around acquisition of land for the Fisher Road upgrade, so we had questions and wanted to discuss the matter in particular. So I will move 16.4. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilor Martin. I'll open it up for discussion. If there's no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We move on to item 16.5, which is the 3088/2025 PDAEIO provision offset in Ripley Valley, external water mains. I see we have some advice from EDQ on this. Does anyone have any questions on this particular matter of council officers? Now, in that case, I will move 16.5. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Augustine. Any discussion on the matter? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to 16.6, which is the Tea Tree Bioenergy Funding for 2324 Annual Programme Report. Does anyone have any questions of council officers of this report? Council Tully does. May I ask the relevant council officer to come forward, please? Thank you. Could you please state your name and the job title? Thank you.
Good morning. Cameron Lund, Programme Coordinator, Special Projects Tea Tree.
Thank you. Council Tully, have a question.
Good morning. On page one of the report, at the bottom in the last paragraph, it says that there were six eligible projects proposals put forward for 2024-25. Yeah, I just want to clarify, if you go to table two, which is the one that's being recommended, there are seven items there, but I think one of them is a carryover from 2324. That's the continuation of the Wildlife Signage and Fauna Movement Project?
Yep, that's correct.
That then leaves one other, and I can understand that, that would make seven. But up the top of page, above the last segment on table one, it talks about wetland waterway restoration on the Bremer River and Warrall Creek, which it says it's ongoing for 2024-2025, but doesn't appear in table two. Has that been completed now?
That's an ongoing programme. That's, it's a pre-approval. It's been, I guess, a blanket statement across the programme, where if council officers deem that there's a location that's suitable for works, then those works will be carried out in communication with the Willow Bank Area Residents Group.
I understand that. If you look at one of the carryover ones, the one I mentioned originally, the Wildlife Signage, that's incorporated to make seven. Should that one also be in table two, that second one, the Wetland Waterway Restoration, to show that that's an ongoing project as part of the 2024-25 year?
Yes, technically, that should be a carryover.
Okay. I'll, Mayor, I'll propose that when we adopt this, the table two, to be amended to include that particular item from table one. I've got that.
That's correct. Good pick-up, Council Tully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Lund? Yes, Council Madden?
Thanks, Mr Lund. I just wanted to clarify with table two, have we, has council decided to proceed with all of these projects? Or are we still yet to do community consultation?
So they've gone through the Willow Bank Area Residents Group and the internal Tea Tree Working Group, which comprises internal council officers. They've been approved through the Willow Bank Area Residents Group and also the internal working group. So they've been approved. The purpose of the report really is to get that endorsed through council, while we're here today.
I got it. Thank you. Thanks for that. Thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr Lund.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll move 16.6. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Martin. I note, Council Tully, you wish to add something? Do you want to do a recommendation B or something, or just a note to the CEO to?
Well, I think we can clarify this. It says as detailed, the recommendation, the last few words is, as detailed in table two of this report, and I'll add the words, with the inclusion of, I'll read the item, which is the last item of table one, wetland waterway restoration on Bremer River and Warrall Creek, long-term project. But that and the column next to it, which are related, they'd be added as to the end of that table two.
If you could read that out for the secretary, what you would like in that recommendation? If you could just check the recommendations.
Perhaps after the word construction specified in table one.
If I can, Mayor, through you as the chair, just, we change the word construction to restoration in line with the report. Thank you.
You're okay with that, Council Tully?
Thank you, yes.
I'm happy with that, Council Martin. Are you happy with that as the second? Thank you. So that's the motion before us. Any discussion? Yes, thank you, Council Madden.
I'd just like to thank Mr Lund for his work on this. He's our new officer focusing on this, and he's done a sensational job so far. Personally, pretty keen to see these projects happen and some community benefit felt from the funds that we have at our disposal. Personally, I'm very intrigued to see how the mobile koala signage goes, because one of the things that happens over time is when a sign is always there, eventually it just becomes something that you kind of ignore. And so I think it'll be good to have signs like that pop up, and it'll be something new, and it'll remind people that there's fauna that cross in that area. And so hopefully, some more native wildlife is saved as a result, which is a pretty cool thing.
Thanks, Council Madden. Council Madden?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I've attended a number of Willow Bank Area Group meetings where this matter has been, this fund has been discussed, and I think it's a great fund. And I'd just like to thank the Willow Bank Area Group for their contribution to this project and the selection of projects to be delivered by this funding, Tea Tree funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Madden. And speaking to it myself, it's good to see that council has recently appointed a programme coordinator to review the existing framework to streamline how project suggestions are received, considered and delivered. And that takes a fair bit of time and consideration. There's lots of consultation with the Willow Bank community, and in particular the Willow Bank Area Residents Group, which do a fantastic job. And as a result, we saw some great projects delivered in the past year that were well received by residents. There was large-scale weed removal at the Mack Family Park and George Hatchman Park, and signage has gone up there, as well as solar panels and air conditioning for the Girl Guides Hart. The Pains Road Koala Reserve also has fencing and gates, as well as tree planting there is still going on. Work has also progressed on the wetland and waterway restoration on the Bremer River and Warrall Creek. Looking at the proposed projects, there are upgrades to the Hight Family Park, revegetation of Perga Creek, and two mobile koala signs that can be moved across Ipswich during the koala breeding season. This programme is funded under a condition of the Tea Tree Bioenergy Waste Disposal Facility, and it really is a great example of how council, the private sector and local groups can collaborate to develop solutions to environmental problems. Are there any other discussions? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We have a supplementary report, 16.7. I'll just double-check that we need to move for that to be accepted. It wasn't a late report, it was supplementary. Okay, so no, thank you. So 16.7 is the procurement, so it's part of the SEQ City Deal Public Arts Initiative Expression of Interest. And because it's supplemental, I'll just read out that recommendation. Pursuant to section 228 of the Lockup Regulations, council resolved it will be in the public interest to invite expressions of interest before inviting written tenders for the provision of design and creation of public art concepts located in Darcidore Place and the Art Gallery Forecourt, Riverheart Parkland, Bremer Vale Park and Talagala Cemetery. And that, pursuant to that, in B, that council's reasons for making such resolution are that, one, it will allow council to identify parties with serious interest and ability without putting all parties to the expense of submitting a full tender response at this early stage of the project. Two, it will allow artists to develop their own design concept for the public artwork. And three, it will allow council to shortlist artists whose previous work and experiences And three, it will allow council to shortlist artists whose previous work and experience is suitable for the projects without putting all parties through the expense of submitting full tender responses. And four, will save council the expense of running a request for tender and evaluating at this early stage of the project. May I ask the relevant council officer some questions, please? Please state your name and your job title.
Good morning, Courtney Stroh, Coordinator, Creative Industries Development.
Um, could you outline some of the time constraints in this and um and I guess the other thing I'm looking for is how has this been consulted with the creative community in Ipswich?
Sure, um, so yeah, unfortunately, there is some quite tight timeframes um for us to be able to meet the requirement of us submitting the documents when it comes to um actually receiving the funding, although the funding has already been allocated, we still have to put forward to say what the projects are for. And that all has to be completed by the end of May. Um, for us to be able to meet that, to provide enough time for people to submit the initial expression of interest, and then for creatives to have enough time to actually go away and really understand what we're looking for and to make something and to create something, we have to give them around six, seven weeks as well, before we come back and actually put the work together to then go forward. So um, this is why we have to put forward for the E O I now, so although end of May might seem a little while away, it's actually quite tight when it comes to these timeframes. Um, and from a creative community point of view, we've got an exceptionally engaged creative community at the moment, we see that from our Ipswich Art Awards, we see that from even the sales that are coming through for the summit. And um, we have an excellent database of creatives as well. In addition to that, we'll be having a social media campaign that will be promoting all of the creative activities that we have on, including the E O I here for public art. And I'll be speaking to some of the key community groups as well.
Um, has this been run by the Ipswich Arts Advisory Group?
Uh, this, as the particular sites have not, however, they are aware that the public art project was coming through and that a public art advisory group would be put forward to be created later on.
Okay, but they're aware of the timeframes and I'm not worried, so it's the locations, but the, the process of the initial E O I before a tender?
Yeah, so they're familiar with the process around that.
Okay, thank you, I'll leave it for other questions, Council Doyle?
Um, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Ms Stroh, um, I was excited to see this uh late report, the public art um is um something that I love seeing. Um, I, I just have one um minor concern, I guess, um, we, we talk in the recommendations particularly B around um parties with serious interest and ability. Um, I, I know from, you know, my previous workers, um, chair last term, uh, we have a very passionate and engaged um local artist community. And but, but we did struggle from time to time with capacity. Um, and being able to deliver um some more large-scale public art pieces and murals, and I know we committed to the community that we would work with local artists in relation to capacity building. Um, I just want to make sure that we have done that and, and we will give enough local artists an opportunity, I, I accept that um you know, for instance, large-scale murals, that's a very bespoke skill set and, and um not all artists can do that. But can we have an insurance that where we've worked with the community?
Yeah, so I'll take that on two parts, you're spot on when it comes to having a specific skill set when it comes to this, you you don't know how to paint a large-scale mural until you've painted a large-scale mural. You don't know how to build or create a sculpture for these sites until you create sculptures for this site. So we've actually taken two parts to this, so for the last two years, we've been running Articulate Programme, which has been about upskilling and capacity building for our local creatives. So this is teaching them how to address proposals, how to have a lot of their um background and information right, we've done courses around how to price things, how to um work through when it comes to proposals. So we've really um engaged quite heavily over the last two years in regards to that. I will also be hosting a um conversation for people to dial in and be able to ask questions, and as I said, we have it very engaged, so I have no doubt that people um would like some additional support, they'll reach out and have the conversation. We're also going to be putting a fact sheet together for um creatives to say, maybe you've got the creativity ideas and some of the business skills, but you need someone who's going to help you more when it comes to the fabricating or something like that. We're just going to have a very general page around, here are some of the people who do this sort of work, and maybe it's something that you could go and partner with them to be able to put forward a stronger application for.
Okay, so it may be a collaboration, um, a partnership between two local artists?
It absolutely could be two local artists, so.
Thank you.
Yes, Council Madden?
Uh, thanks, Mayor, um, this is amazing. Um, I'm very, Council Martin and I are very familiar with Talagalla Cemetery, I was just there the other day, seeing how the construction was going of the the extension to Talagalla Cemetery. Um, I, I guess this might be too big a question to ask you, but what's the range of possibilities? Is it sculpture, is it mural, is it something botanical?
So this is, I guess, what's really great about going towards the E O I opportunity, it's not going to be limited by, I guess, our black and white thinking when it comes to this, you know, we're council workers and we have a certain way of thinking. And um, this allows those artistic and creative people to really put forward what they're thinking and what they want to do. Um, we're really encouraging sculpture and three D pieces, so it could be something that ties in botanical as well, because there is a requirement that there has to be a ten-year life for the project, and sometimes with murals, that doesn't always work. So um, we are looking for something sculptural, and um, there's some great examples of other cemeteries around the country that really lean into sculptural art now to help people ground themselves when they arrive at the cemeteries. So I'm, I'm excited for the options that will come through with that as well.
That's good, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Ms Stroh, can I ask, when will things come to council for a decision?
Yeah, so we'll come forward towards right at the end, the milestones that we have, um, we will be providing and circulating updates um in between, but for an actual council decision will be towards the end of the, um, before we submit the proposals.
Okay, so when, so the council will do the E O I?
Yep.
And then do the, the tender?
Yeah.
And then when council is making their decision, you'll come to council for that to be ratified?
Exactly, once we've spoken with the Public Art Advisory Group, then we'll come forward with the recommendations they've provided. I think it's important to say that we are engaging external experts in this space, who are going to be providing their feedback um in regards to what will work, what the community sentiment is, and to be able to come back from there.
And how's the focus going on local artists? What, how are we, is it mandated that a local artist will receive this commission or these commissions?
Um, it won't be mandated, and I would hate to think that if we have an exceptional opportunity or something that's put forward from someone outside of the region, that we would turn our back to it, um, to not consider that option. Um, and we also, yeah, sorry, we won't be mandating that, but again, we'll be strongly encouraging our locals to apply, and I think that it's um important that, yeah, they look at their skill set and what they can do and who they can work with when it comes to this.
Thank you, Ms Stroh, I think, Council Tully, did you have a question?
Is that Council Augustine? Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms Stroh, I just wanted to know, I noticed that the Riverheart Parklands um site was on. Um, one of the, the sites, um, was there any consideration given to potential flooding down on that site and?
Yeah.
Can you explain a little bit about that site?
Sure, I think it's important that as a city, when we have these public art opportunities, it doesn't look like we're turning our back on the river either, we want to be saying that we are a river city and we want to be embracing that. But what we're really trying to do is use an adaptive model where we're looking at something that's being decommissioned, which is the fountain. And again, using that creativity of the artist to go, what else could this be, what could this look like? And there are ways of doing art in spaces that aren't just three D sculptures that could get washed away, it can be etchings, it can be um cement um parts that make it more rise, it can be botanic as well. So um, looking at all of those different options, it would, yeah, be something that's considered. I also note that in uh Powerhouse in Brisbane, they have a phenomenal sculpture that really recognizes flooding and helps with their resilience and, you know, really talks to the fact that they understand they're in that area, and that's something that could be great for our city also.
Right, thank you.
Yes, I was just going to say again, this is, as Councilor Doyle said, quite an exciting uh opportunity for local artists, and it's, the mayor has already highlighted, it would be, would be great to have local artists involved. Uh, my question is more uh in relation to the selection of the sites. Um, and obviously there is some selection criteria, but was there any consultation undertaken with um local councillors uh to see if other sites could be uh included in consideration?
So what we really did was we um set some criteria at the start when it came to um really specific around what we had to meet for this funding. There were some very specific requirements that closed down a lot of options for us. We also went through for the first time around what we were currently already working on. We're really conscious that this has come into us and we don't want to be taking council officers off other projects to be prioritising this over work that has already been endorsed, been completed because of the timeframe. So first off, just to say, there were those parameters. Then from that, we did have a, I have had a briefing with the Chair to talk about this project and just discussed with her about the opportunities, and took her through the criteria process of all of the projects and areas that we were already working in, and how that was assessed and selected.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Council Madden.
Yeah, I welcome Bremer Vale Park being put forward, um, I just need to understand why Bremer Vale Park as opposed to other pretty much equivalent parks across Ipswich? I like Bremer Vale Park and I think it's worthy, but I need to know why.
So that um park was considered because of the future work that's happening with the ephemeral um garden, sorry, ephemeral waterways, when it comes to looking at the stormwater and that, we're going to be on site, we're going to be having landscape architects looking at the site, already working on it, and this is something that we can add to it to enhance it, rather than starting a completely new project that will take up more resources, more time to be able to complete, so because of our tight timeframes, we couldn't necessarily do all that, so that's why Bremer Vale was included. I also want to say that if we talk local artists, having these nature-based art options will also something that's a real flavour for our local artists, and um will definitely provide them a greater opportunity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms Stroh, thank you. I'll move sixteen point seven and ask for a seconder, thank you, Council Augustine. Um, in opening up for discussion, I'm, I'm quite delighted with this approach, um, and if I could mention, um, I guess we saw a few years ago with, with Bottle Alley where a decision was made by, by council and and um, and we didn't have local artists involved, so I'm very pleased with the fact that we're having a staged process to maximize the opportunities for local residents to be involved and local artists to be involved, so I'm quite delighted with this process, I'll be supporting it, and it's great to see this money coming from the SEQ City Deal, so it's money from all three levels of government, um, supporting this public art initiative. Council Augustine?
Oh, thank you, um, yeah, it was, I think, when I had the discussions um with the, with Ms Stroh, um, a, along with the Deputy Chair as well, it was very um uh exciting to see the potential that we could have. Um, very much, there is a timeframe and a, um, that we need to hit, and um, uh but in saying that, I think the work that's been done previous and the learnings from uh Bottle Alley, I think the uh, the team has really um put into action and um addressed some of the learnings that they needed to, uh, especially around the Articulate Programme, and we've identified and worked with a lot of our artists. Um, and let's see if um we can get some of them to, to put in some, um, any eye to, um, yeah.
Thank you, Council Augustine, Council Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor, um, I'm very supportive of the project, and I just wanted to note that perhaps we could take some inspiration from the decommissioned um water feature at um Riverheart Parklands, whatever it um ends up being and what they do. Um, and consider um the water, decommissioned water feature at Rebel Domain as well on the other side of the lagoon, because they're very similar. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, thank you. Any other discussion? Council Antonelli?
Yes, I'd like to encourage the local arts community to get involved in this, this is an exciting project, and um, as Ms Stroh highlighted, we might not have all of the necessary skills in one uh individual, and, and we do know that there are a number of local artists who do have that necessary skill, but uh for the most part, it is um to do such a large installation does require a great deal of skill. But I would believe that um a collaboration, as Council Doyle highlighted, would be um certainly something that would be also quite exciting. And perhaps a number of the local artists could get together and share their knowledge jointly in order to establish a piece of art, an installation work, that would be um something that could recognize um arts in our community historically as well as um currently.
Thank you, Council Antonelli. There's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, uh, CEO, thank you very much, I, I do appreciate the fact that the council has worked across the different divisions to see what's already underway, what has already been a council priority. Um, you know, rather than having to find something new, so it's great to see, I think, great initiative, thank you. And now move on to item seventeen point one, which is a notice of motion from Council Paul Tully on proposed amendments to the Media and Corporate Communications Policy, I'll hand over to you, Council Tully, as, as the mover.
Thank you, Mayor, I move the procedural motive, the motion that the matter lie on the table.
Thank you, do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Madden?
Lord, there's no requirement for a seconder on that type of procedural motion.
So what was your procedural motion?
That the matter lie on the table.
Oh, sorry, I didn't quite hear, could, so you want the matter to lie on the table, do you, could you give a reason why?
That's what I'm moving.
Would you mind explaining why?
Well, that, that would be entering into the debate, uh, in the matter, which is probably not appropriate if the motion hasn't been moved.
Well, obviously you've moved the notice of motion, um um, so you, you've put, you gave a notice a week ago of this notice of motion, and now you'd like to lay the matter on the table, so it's not discussed today. May I ask why, I think Ipswich residents would like to know why you don't want to discuss it today?
It's, it's not that I don't want to discuss it today, but um I'm moving, um, I haven't moved that other motion, that was only a notice of motion, but I'm moving that the matter lie on the table, I'm entitled to do that, and um, that, that motion should be put to the meeting.
Yes, and I'm asking you a question, I'm, I'm permitted to ask a question. Um, could you give a reason as to why you're laying the matter on the table?
Well, it gives, gives all councillors the opportunity to consider the matters in full.
Okay. Um, may I ask for a seconder for that? Sorry, Council Madden?
The point of order, that's a procedural motion that doesn't require a seconder.
Okay. Any discussion on laying the matter on the table? I guess, I guess I asked Council Tully, did, did you consider beforehand to discuss it with councillors before moving a notice of motion? Before putting a, a motion to, to discuss it with other councillors or myself?
Um, I proposed a notice of motion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, uh.
And we're discussing it?
No, we're not discussing that because it hasn't been moved, I moved a separate motion, which I would ask be put to the vote.
Okay, all those who wish to lay the matter on the table will put it to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's Councilor Madden, the Deputy Mayor, Council Tully, um, Councilor Mart, Antonelli, Councilor Martin and Councilor Madden. Uh, those against, myself, those abstaining, uh, Council Doyle and Councilor Augustine, so that's passed, so that this particular notice of motion is not being discussed today, and we haven't noted when it will come back, I noticed in that notice of motion. Um, we now have one of, one of the items, which is item sixteen point three, which is the procurement matter on the, the software for picture Ipswich. So that's the procurement on recollect picture library subscription. May I check with the CEO if we have the relevant council officer here to answer some of the?
Thank you, Mayor, Chair, yes we do, we have um, Ms Samantha Chan, Ms Samantha Chandler, who's um going to come forward and seek to address the questions of the council.
Ms Chandler, could you please say your name and your job title, please?
Good morning, Samantha Chandler, Manager of Libraries and Customs Services.
Thank you, I know, I think, was it you, Council Augustine, the first question?
Yes, um, thank you very much, I, I just wanted to know, did we have any um stats on the website, as in um visitation, you know, hits or even uploads? Um, the pictures, um, that sort of thing?
So for twenty twenty four, we had twenty thousand active users, or just over twenty thousand active users, um, in comparison to twenty twenty one, which was about two thousand, so it's um growing each year.
Okay, um, and from the community, is there a real interest um from the community?
There's a significant interest from the community, um, there's a, a very strong um group in our community that um are very avid users of picture Ipswich. Um, they are adding stories to um the content that's there. They're um adding names, which is fantastic, um, and we also have quite a large collection um here in the building that we're uploading on a regular basis. And we have a very um uh large volunteer group that come in and um work on uploading that information.
Thank you very much.
I think we had some other questions as well, thank you, Council Tully. I think Council Tully had the next lot of questions beforehand?
It was about um the sole supplier issue. Um, and, and the report on page two talks about many councils and libraries throughout Australia utilizing the system. Is, is there any real alternative, or is it daylight between um another supplier?
There's similar products. There's similar products in the market. The difference between, or the benefit of this product is the fact that the community can identify people in the pictures and that they could actually add stories to it. So that was the main reasons why we went with this particular product when it went out to market last time.
So that it's quite significant in terms of what we want to get out of.
Yes, yes.
The process using this product is superior to anything else that might be available.
It is because it allows the direct engagement with the community. So it's not just something that you look at, you can actually participate.
Okay, thank you. That's, oh, and the only other, have we got a mover and seconder, Mayor, with this?
Not yet.
No, no, we haven't yet. We're just in the question phase. And there were a few other questions. I think Council Antonelli had some questions and Council Madden. Any other questions, Council Tully? Council Antonelli?
Yeah, mine was just in relation to the fact that it is the only one who provides the particular service we're after. So I guess my question was whether the fee that's being asked for is fair and reasonable to the residents.
There's a couple of things to consider when we're actually looking at the fee. It's on a platform, so if we were to change suppliers quickly, so this is the first time the contracts come back for renewal, there's a significant investment in then migrating that information to a new platform. So if we were going to make that change, so there's cost involved in that. So we haven't gone back out to market this time to compare the prices and look for an alternative. And that is the main reason for that, is that migration cost is significant and the time and effort that goes into making that change.
With there only being a three-year contract with this, I take it we will be constantly looking at the market to see whether or not during that three years, there is a reasonable alternative and cost-effective alternative?
Yes, we would be looking for alternatives.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Madden.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to clarify, you know, with accessibility, are the two main platforms Picture Ipswich WWW website and Picture Ipswich Ipswich Libraries Facebook site, is there anything I'm missing? Just those two?
So in relation to Picture Ipswich? So you can access Picture Ipswich through Ipswich Libraries website?
Okay.
So Picture Ipswich has the actual site where this information is held, but there's different ways to access it.
So that, you're sort of answering my question. The two that I'm familiar with is the website that says www.pitcheripswich.com.au and Picture Ipswich Ipswich Libraries Facebook site. But are you saying there's a third?
No, there isn't, but you can access it different ways. So you can go to the Ipswich Libraries website and then you can click on a link and it'll take you to Picture Ipswich.
Link through there. But they're the two. That's the WW and that's the Facebook site.
That's the Facebook site, yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Miss Chandler. We appreciate that. Great to see so much interest. So I'll move sixteen point three, the procurement of recollect picture library subscription. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, Council Augustine. In discussion, I just think that Picture Ipswich is such a great resource for our city, storing the stories and images that narrate the history of the city of Ipswich. It's really well-loved and referenced globally. The company provides tools for digital transformation and knowledge extraction from existing digital collections. I think it's a good fit as it's easy for the community to use. I'll open it up for other discussion. Yes, Council Tully?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an amendment that in paragraph B of the motion to delete the words "an initial term" and insert the words "a term".
Correct. So I'll just wait for when.
A term?
Yes, I take away the N for "end" and "initial". A term or three years. As the mover, I'm happy that Council Augustine, as a seconder, you're happy with that. Thank you very much for that correction. And also, sorry, there was also, the deputy mayor had highlighted the the spelling typo of the R in the word subscription, the title.
Yeah.
If you could just correct that, that'd be great. Yep. Are you okay with that, Council Augustine as well? Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote.
Sorry, just wanted to quickly add, I'm really supportive of this and I'm proud of Ipswich that we have a platform like this that is interactive with the community, given our, you know, our heritage. So it's important that we keep these subscriptions, these tools like this for our community.
Thank you. There's nothing else to discuss. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're now going to item eighteen, questions on notice. I didn't see any or hear any. So we'll close the meeting at eleven nineteen. Thank you so much and thank you to the public gallery and the media. Thank you.